Evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for March 26. I'd like to call the meeting to order, 6:30 PM. First on the agenda is to approve a lot of, approval of a lot of minutes from meetings. We had quite a few special meetings, so we do have-
Carol, excuse me, could I make a motion to amend the agenda? Do I do it at this point?
What would you like to-
If, is item, item eight going, it will cover the incubator properties?
It was supposed to cover all.
Okay, could we add an item to discuss the planning of Tim Puglielli to the Planning and Zoning Board, the appointment of Tim? And also could we add an item to discuss the traffic proposal of the Safety Coordinator? Both should be relatively brief.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll make a second. I haven't talked to the gentleman yet, so... Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to second it, discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll add those as-
Twelve and thirteen?
Oh, probably, yeah, twelve, thirteen. We'll do Audience and Citizens. Okay, so, we can, if we have a lot of comments, though, then we'll have to do minutes separately. So, any comments on January 12?
No.
Yeah, okay. January 23?
I have no comments on any of them.
Okay, no comments on any? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the special meeting minutes.
Oh, okay, go ahead. You're just gonna do special meeting minutes?
Yeah, I'll just do the special and you can do the-
Okay.
I'll second it.
January 12th, January 26th, February 6th, February 20th, February 26th, and February 28th, motion to approve those minutes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meetings on January 23rd, February 27th, and March 14th.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, and I apologize, I actually have a comment for 20, uh, 220. The resident, Bob Gidner, had written that, I guess in the minutes I wrote, that no one joined us on Zoom, and he said, "Could you amend to say no one joined on Zoom because of technical difficulties?" Now, did we know that there was technical difficulties that night? Or did we find that out after? Because we can't amend unless we-
Couldn't make it go.
He couldn't get it on, I remember you texting him.
Okay, so then I'll make that a change to that minutes, okay. So we'll add technical difficulties things. And that would be for 220.
Make a motion that we amend them as stated?
Okay, thank you. All right. Audience of citizens. Now, this is when we invite the public to speak with us, and it's not really a question-and-answer period, keep the time moving along, so if you could state your name, and we'd love to hear from you. Anyone have any comments?
You guys are doing a great job.
We love those kind of comments. You can join us anytime, Jerry. All right, so we have seven Audiences of Citizens, that's great. Okay. Stormwater Management Plan. I put that on there because we have an issue at a, at a residence, and our building inspector, we've gone through that stormwater management plan, you've read it, you've probably read it, right? It doesn't look like it was ever adopted in our ordinance. What is in the ordinance says non-stormwater discharge. It never addressed stormwater discharge in the language of the minutes. So I went back to where Dick Smith even had entered it in 2014, I believe, I mean, it's a pretty older document. It gets updated every year, as you, as you're aware, it's on the website, so anybody can review this document. Next it'll be starting to, for review in June of this year, I believe, again. So I'm not really sure how to handle that, or if we have to now make, you know... I was thinking I'd go to the town attorney and have her make sure the language represents what's in our stormwaters management plan, but it might be something that has to go to the town, a town meeting for a vote to officially-
Adopt.
Adopt or amend the ordinance, it's already on the books. And if anyone wants to look, it's under Utilities on our ordinances, so it's all very clearly in there, it just doesn't look like the language matches necessarily, again, because we have a stormwater management plan, and it strictly states non-stormwater management discharge with all the description of what is now in our ordinance. So I didn't know if anyone else had noticed that or had a comment, but-
So the plan as it is, is fine, we just have to align it with the language in the ordinance?
Exactly, like, so the state, the state has reviewed our plan, and they've accepted it every year, we renew it, it's just, it doesn't seem to reference correctly in our ordinances. And so our building inspector pointed that out, that if we wanted to cite anyone for a violation, let's say, those two documents don't seem to mesh right now. So I'll do a little further-
Can we do that by the April 1st meeting?
We've already filed the agenda for that town meeting, so it would have to be at a different meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, the legal notice has already gone out, so we can't change that.
I think it's a good approach to align them.
Just gotta know, we have two residents joining us online. Our online people, I didn't look over here during Audience of Citizens, did you have anything you wanted to say to the board? Tom or Carol? I don't see anyone raising their hand or anything, so I just forget. Okay. Excuse me. Municipal Agent for the Elderly, oh, I'm sorry-
Could I just ask?
Yep.
Is this stormwater management plan the same as the, is it the MS-4 report?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
That comes out every year? If I got the number right, it sounds like a gang, the MS-4.
The MS-4, I thought was more cleaning the catch basins, that we had to follow the state mandate to clean the catch basins.
Well, it's all in that plan, I believe, I've read the plan now a couple times, and it kind of stepped, it gives the town, it wants the municipalities to have a plan, that how many catch basins you're gonna clean, how often, and then you report the amount of salt recovered and all those kind of things. And again, I might be missing a lot, Tony's here, so am I missing kind of the general?
No, you got it, the, and it's both, so they test the water also to make sure there are no pollutants in the water, so it's a big thing. I did, since you picked on me, Connecticut General Statute states law weight in our ordinance is incorrect, but because ours is incorrect, you can just rely on Connecticut General Statutes. So if, you can never go, I guess, against it, you can make it more strict, but you can't make it less, so you can always fall back on that.
Right, and that's what the town clerk and I kind of said, I think we're covered, because the state, you know, the state statute would kick in, but because the documents sort of don't match up, we thought we better correct ours. And we have found that, you know-
Did we receive money from them, the state too, for that program, correct?
I don't know if we received money, have we?
I thought if you do the compliance and stuff, there was some set aside money or something, I don't know about that.
The reason I wanted, I asked is that the MS-4, is that last year, when we went through it, it, it looked as if it had been very perfunctorily updated every year, and there doesn't seem to be much public awareness, and to your point, only 400 people roughly voted today, so I don't know how much more public awareness would be, but I think, I'd like us to look to more, at it more carefully when it comes up in June, just to be aware so that... There were many things when I read it last, and it's really not riveting reading, but there were many, many points that they had said five years ago, going to do this, six years early, gonna do that, nothing was done. So I think that's an area that we need to focus on.
Okay, well, when we align the documents, that would be a good time to deep dive into that thing, do the corrections we want. Okay. The Municipal Agent for the Elderly, so we were notified by the state that we need to officially appoint a municipal agent for the elderly. I know in the past, it's been Rosie Binninger, our Social Service Director, so I was told that we needed to appoint at our Board of Selectmen meeting, our legislative group here, not the body, so it doesn't have to go to a town meeting, but-
And what does the agent do, and it's to run through December?
They, well, again, we can decide the terms, she said, she suggested two years or four years, most towns, she said, do four years, but I thought two-year would be good, not sure, you know, where we are with people, maybe in retirement mode or something, so I thought two years would be fine. We can certainly do it for four years, and that's fine, and then if Rosie wants to step down, we reappoint, you know, for the rest of the term.
And Rosie's been it in the past?
She has been in the past. Basically, you're, you're the point person for elderly, if they need any kind of services in town, and we're lucky, we have Kirtland Commons, so Joanne is a great resource down there, but people would go to Rosie if they need assistance with, like, as they do now as the, as her Social Service Director, she helps them with, you know, fuel assistance or that kind of thing, so I just thought I'd make it official that we reappoint, so-
Do you need a motion?
Can I have a motion?
I move that we reappoint Rosie Binninger to fill the role of Municipal Agent for the elderly with the term expiring December of 2025.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, so the ARPA, I just wanted to bring that up again, because we all recommend, we met, our last meeting, which is in the notes from 3:14. We voted to send to the Board of Finance the Heritage and Tourism Corridor, Downtown Deep River Master Plan, and Public Art for Economic Development. There is some thought that they would like the Board of Finance into some general discussions, so they haven't voted on anything, that perhaps we do spend some of the money on capital, based on how hit our budget is gonna be, there's some driving forces to hit the budget, of course, Region Four and those kind of things. So I thought we could reassess if we wanted to, to maybe put that extra money, as much as we support the nonprofits and we really want to go that way, it looked like people were interested in supporting any kind of work we could do at the transfer station. So I was gonna suggest, when we present to the Board of Finance tonight, we present this, because this is our first chance to meet with the Board of Finance in a joint meeting, we present what we have here, and then with the remaining funds, or if we wanna tweak some of these numbers, we suggest putting the rest towards the transfer station upgrades, so.
So the difference is, we've got 61,000 left over, we're 221, minus the 160, and you're suggesting the 61 in total to the transfer station?
I am, unless we thought we wanted to tweak some of these numbers.
As in what, higher or lower?
Maybe go a little lower on some, like, you know, we go to the Heritage Corridor, cut that to 25 or something, so I'm not sure where the, the balance is gonna be for the Board of Finance, you know, they, they really wanted to see, I think, some commitment to, something to help the budget, because that's their job, of course, to get the budget, you know.
But what's, what's our game plan for the transfer station? Do we have a game plan? Do we have prices?
Well, going off of what, we don't have any prices, but we were gonna try to reconfigure the, the entrance with a gate of some type, that way we can really be better at checking the permits, you know, the stickers on people's windshields. So there was gonna be, maybe come in, put a gate up, maybe reconfigure the driveway so that if people come in and they don't have a sticker, they can get told they have to leave, and they have a way to come out, instead of going through the thing. Just again, going by what I had for, and I think I showed you guys at one point, you know, that Jacobson had come up with kind of a, as you drive in the transfer station, and put all the, all the materials up top, like, all the bulky waste containers, so you're in that upper loop, instead of ever going down below, and that looks like a nice flow up there.
I am comfortable holding that in a pot, a separate account, to do some work at the transfer station, I'd also be comfortable, and I realize it's a finite number here, to do some of the work we talked about at the Public Works Building as well, if-
If need be.
If need be, exactly. So if we kept it loose enough in that area, thinking about that, in these amounts, we would just need to get a decision made and contract signed by the end of the year.
By the end of the year?
Yeah. So what we could do is stay in session, and then we could actually have this conversation with the Board of Finance, does that work with you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I would like to see some sort of plan, documentation of what, what type of money we're looking at to put to the transfer station, instead of just saying, "We're gonna hold this money." I know that in the past, I think we had $20,000 for a fence, we took that out, so is it still the same $20,000, so I'd just like to have some harder numbers.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay, I understand. I think when they pushed us at one meeting, I said $100,000 for the transfer station, we had to just throw out a number, so perhaps that is way overestimated, perhaps it's, you know, but then $60,000 is a very nice chunk of money, so that could get us exactly what we want. Okay, so that was my discussion point there, I just wanted to-
So we'll just hold, hold that until the Board of-
Because we need to get something through to the Board of Finance, so that, again, contracts have to be signed by the end of the year, and we're worried about losing the money, we don't want that to happen, so. Okay, River Cog, inter-local agreement for hazardous waste. I presented this at the March meeting, because it's going to be something voted on at the town meeting, and Catherine had asked what the impact financially for Deep River was, and I apologize, I didn't have that number handy at that time, so I pulled this off. This year, we were paying $2,600, $2,674, and, oh, no, that's proposed, excuse me, we were paying-
$2,632.
Oh, yeah, six, $2,632, and for the 2025 budget, it's going to be $42 more, so $2,674. So it is a great program, we've done it for years, and it allows people of Deep River to dispose of their hazardous waste correctly, which everyone wants to do, they wanna do the right thing, you know, they don't wanna put it where it doesn't go, like, throw outside the, your window or whatever, and put it in our regular landfill or transfer station, so.
It looks reasonable, do you need a motion?
No, no, it was just sort of a report back, in case somebody had watched the last meeting and didn't see that number.
Well, it goes to the town meeting anyways, right?
Right, so it goes to a town meeting, so we'll talk about this more at the town meeting. All right, number eight is the Town Real Estate Holdings. So we had talked earlier about the incubator buildings and the property there, and if it was worth, there was some question the Board of Selectmen came up with, if we do wanna move forward selling a piece of property, if that's what it economically looked like was a better option, would that property be more valuable with a building on it versus a vacant piece of land? So then we thought we'd get a value on all the properties there. So I have an agent down at William Revis, is that how you say that? That I've been working with, and then I did add two more properties for her to check out, so she was supposed to give me the report by today, and she said, "I shall get it to me tomorrow," so unfortunately, I don't have anything, I know you've been doing a little research, so I don't know if you have anything to share on that, but-
I did no research, Carol, I presented the incubator property assessment, we talked about it nine, 10 weeks ago, and you were gonna then go ahead and get the commercial-
Right, okay.
Realty assessment.
So if you wanna add anything else to this, otherwise maybe we have to table it-
I just wanna see where that was, so we can table that and bring it up, so we will be able to see it the next couple days and-
I'm hoping.
Have it at the next meeting, are we comfortable that it's just one commercial realtor's opinion? Do you need to get second opinions or any kind of measure?
Well, I mean, Robyn's got a lot, our assessor has a lot that I can use, so we can kind of compare and contrast if we want, but I guess, see what she brings in first. The other piece of property, besides the incubator buildings, was the property on River Street that holds the Firehouse, Fire Department Museum right now, there was some thought about, we do have someone interested in buying it, so that might be something great, you know, to get it back on the tax rolls, and then maybe use some of the proceeds, Duane, I think you suggested, to maybe have the Fire Department help them build a, construct something, maybe on their property and with for their museum, something like that, but all, just ideas right now, but, so that was the other property.
That's great, so we'll see the report and be able to talk more fully in a couple weeks.
Yeah, okay. Town meeting is scheduled for April 1st, 6 PM, and that'll be to talk about accounting software, annual payment of $21,000, and then the Animal Control Officer Interlocal Agreement, and the Hazardous Waste Interlocal Agreement, that just, our legislative body, which is the town, has to vote and approve that we enter into these agreements with these other towns. And then following that, 6 o'clock, there is the Board of Ed meeting, which they're presenting their budget, so I urge all the residents to go to that, they are looking for a 6% increase on their budget, which is $1.3 million, that's really affecting our budget, so get your voices heard out there, right? So we made our meeting earlier, so that everybody can go up to the Region Four meeting, public hearing. The Solar Array Farm, to give an update, last time we talked about a discussion, they were looking to waive building fees, we all reviewed the contract, we didn't say, see anything in there that waived them, we do have a meeting, the Board of Selectmen, on Thursday, that we will be having an executive session with all the solar people, solar people, people of that company, to go over all the details and that sort of thing, iron all that out, so hopefully we can still move forward and have that installed.
So Carol, on the, what is the purpose of the conference call? Because we've got the contract, they've signed the contract, and then Dick has sent the letter to them, pretty firmly stating you need to pay this, so what is the strategy of the call?
Well, I talked to the former First Selectman, and he is under a strong opinion that they had verbally agreed, if it's not written anywhere, but he is pretty sure it's written somewhere, so I think this just gives the chance for the people from the solar company to, perhaps they have a document that's signed.
If it's written somewhere, they should, someone should have a document.
Yeah, so perhaps they can produce that, and because we're new, you know, and we can now meet, meet all the players and their company and really work this out, we obviously wanna keep the agreement going and keep everyone happy, it's a good situation for the town, what is it, $43,000 a year?
$43,000 for 20 years.
So that will be a nice income stream for the town, so we want, want that to work out.
Even if something's written, this letter doesn't, from Dick, doesn't sound like there's much wiggle room here.
No, but Dick has not seen any letter, so he is, so he is on-
Okay, I see what you mean.
I mean, if there is a letter and they can produce it, then Dick said, if somebody tells me that the Board of Selectmen has waived the fees, then I'll waive the fees, but-
All right, so more to be revealed on Thursday, so.
Right, so hopefully Thursday, we find out a lot more information.
You wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't wanna push them to a corner where they back away from it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we don't wanna lose them coming in, it's a good deal, and I know, so to get that payment, the town attorney recalled some discussions that there was that they were gonna pay us more than pay these other fees, or something like that, so there was maybe some discussion that, and I don't know if it was recorded anywhere.
So we're looking to see if they have something in writing?
A lot of times, not so much in our community, but in other communities, when business comes in, they'll forego permits, you know, the building permits, or give them a tax abatement, you know, but I was not part of those negotiations, I negotiated the $43,000, I was not part of the, the building permit, I don't wanna give any money away, we don't have to.
Right, right.
But I also am afraid I don't wanna lose them either.
We don't wanna lose them, but we'll see what, if they have anything in writing, because they didn't, they did the amendment in September, they signed the contract in March, and they did the amendment in September, neither one mentioned anything with reference to that. All right, to be revealed.
So as long as we all, that's what we all read in the contract, so we're on the same page going in, but that'll, so that'll happen Thursday. And Region Four Schools, just general discussion items today, it's the referendum, but by the time people are watching this, although people online, you know, go out and vote, you can be there till 8 o'clock, when I was there, there was only about 400 people, so we had a lot of turnout when we tried to charge for garbage bags, you all should be out there voting, this is a bigger deal than garbage bags. And I'm sorry, I wanna jump back up, so the ARPA Funds, number six, then Budget Recommendations, and I just saw Tim out of the corner of my eye, so I would like to bring to the Board of Finance a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen for, that we move forward with purchasing the fire engine for next year, for the next year's budget.
So this is the one that'll take two to three years to develop, is replacing the 1989 vehicle?
Yeah, so I, for the Board of Selectmen, probably more appropriately, but here is the new estimate for the truck, they just sent me a new updated one today. But, right, so when the town orders the truck, really don't have to put any money out at first, we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it, obviously, but right now, they're so backed up, and it's a custom-built kind of thing, that it's two to three years before you get your truck.
Tim, is that $75,000 added onto that?
No, that's strictly from the truck bill, and that's not really a quote, it's just a letter, it's what you see in front of you, it's not a formal quote, and the truck, you know, if monies get, gets allocated and put in the budget, then obviously, a RFP process will go through and whatnot.
So the current price of this engine is $1.3 million, so we would bond it, and then we'd have a hit every year for, you know, our payments.
And would the first one, do we have any sense, would it be in this coming budget year, would it be in the following, it would be me, but to advise, excuse me, on that?
I don't think it's in the, I don't think, you don't pay until you start, they start building it, like, Tim, is that how this one was?
The last one was when the chassis was delivered to Gallows, like, that's when the first payment was due, and the chassis is, I think, at least a year out, I could verify that.
So, so it might be, Catherine, it might be in the end of next year, this 2025, 20, what are we, 24, 25, 25, 26, probably more likely. But, so I, I really feel strongly, because of the lag time, that if we don't get on our order in, then we have a nice tour of the Firehouse, we know their needs, they have that report, so the needs assessment is there, how do you guys feel about presenting this?
I think the fire truck needs to be replaced, it's on well over time, it's way past its, its life. A couple of questions that were discussed in our budget workshop were on, you know, the lifespan in that report might have been for a higher density, higher usage, municipal environment, et cetera, et cetera, so if we are assured that that, that holds for the kind of usage we've had here in this municipality with these number of fires, if that is solid, then I think it's time to replace this vehicle, or piece of equipment. We've got a plan, we spent 17 years not making a lot of investments, you can't go on forever with that, but, so I think we need to replace the equipment, I just have to see, what does that mean? I mean, I'm comfortable if we say that to the Board of Finance, then they need to come back and say, "What it'll come with bonding, how it'll impact us this year or the next year on the mill rate," timing-wise, and this will be for the Board of Finance discussion, but, you know, we are lightening up our debt load in, in two more cycles, so this could fit in very nicely there.
Right, it's just us to present, move it forward to Board of Finance, and they are the ones that would come up with how, how it would work out, payment-wise, you know, and finance, financing it. So are we comfortable moving it forward?
My biggest concern is that, you know, yes, we need it, but we also know that there's a Firehouse that's needed too. And, you know, it's, it's a lot of money, again, I support it, but it's, we, we know where we're at right now with the mill rate, you know, if this definitely is not gonna touch this year, okay, because there's a little breathing room, but if the Firehouse touches us this year, then we're, we're in bigger problems, you know, you guys know what the numbers are.
That's why I think we need to look, is when the sewer bond ages out in two years, and try to figure out what we're doing, so that we can afford to carry more.
Well, you'll, you'll have 200-plus thousand for there, you'll have $43,000 coming from the solar, so- the solar. So there's 250,000, give or take. You know, if I knew that we had that, definitely, and we can put that towards the fire truck and the firehouse, sure, it's a no-brainer. But my, my biggest concern is that if we get whacked this year on, on a mill rate, which looks like it's going to happen, and then we're going to get all this stuff coming on next year and following year, you know, the residents are going to get whacked pretty hard for the next couple of years. Unless we can do something with the schools.
That's true. So I think our job is to say, we support this moving forward, and then to see if the Board of Finance will push back or say, we can't afford it, or are we comfortable?
I'm comfortable supporting this. We have to see numbers on what it would mean if we're moving forward with the fire station and with this, you know, or is it, can we afford one or the other, or neither until we get out to two more years?
Right. This puts this on, the Board of Finance's plate to figure out. But all those things will be taken into consideration. It's just, do we move it off of here to them to, as a board, we say, this is what we'd like you to figure out if we can afford it? If they come back and say, we, you know, something, worst-case scenario, then maybe we say, okay, well, thank you for trying, you know, or whatever. But, but I would like to go to that next step and see if we can afford it. Get the Board of Finance to start crunching the numbers.
I think I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So can I have a motion to move this forward?
I move that we move forward on replacing the 1989 piece of equipment and asking the Board of Finance to give us their best judgment on how this can be financed.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. So that jumps us down to audience of citizens.
No, you got, you got the two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Planning and zoning.
Yep.
The reason I, I think it was for planning and zoning, that gentleman submitted it on February 7th. And we said last week that nobody talked to him. I've, I have spoken to him. And so I would just like us to move forward in a timely manner on that.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't call him either.
You know what? Why don't you give him my number and have him call me? Because again, it's easier for him to have him call me than.
I'm going to share the contact number, yours with him and his with yours.
Right.
Or however you say that, grammatically.
No, it's, it's, you know, again, when I do have a chance, it's later in the afternoon or early evening. So let him call me. I'm available. It's easier to pick up the phone and dial the phone up.
I get home at 9 o'clock. I can't call anybody.
Late last night.
That's when I text people at 10 or 11 o'clock at night. Okay. So sorry, that is tabled again. Sorry, sir. We, I appreciate you stepping up, but, so we'll table that again.
And what was the next one? One more?
Safety coordinator. I don't know what that is.
I sent, two weeks ago, I sent you both a little study. We went to the River Cog presentation. And the last meeting, they had a state representative speaking of her capabilities. I understand that previous administration and our state trooper have worked with this program in the past. They will come in, they will take an assessment of the various streets. We've told them they'll do a count, and they will provide equipment. And they have new equipment that's available. They are federally funded, and they have bandwidth to work on this. And in, in the proposal, I, I listed out the number of streets that we have heard at our meetings here, and some that we've heard previously, and also the ones that Trooper Kraus had listed on his whiteboard up there. So I was hoping we could discuss that, and if you're interested.
I've actually, I've talked to that woman several times over the months, and I've already put in an application for Deep River prior to you sending me that email. So I apologize. I didn't follow it because I'd already talked to Megan about that up at UConn.
Well, I spoke to her.
So we're on the list for receiving the counters and those.
She gave reference that this was a different program than that. Can't get my laptop up. I want to pull up this thing to make sure I've got her name. She wanted to come in, and she's ready to come in. But she, it was, sounds to me like it was a different program. It's Melissa Evans, Connecticut Safety Circuit Rider Program, and data collection, resident education, et cetera, et cetera, development of local road safety plan, identification of low-cost, short-term solutions, active help in aligning key officials. She felt we were quite interesting as an entity because of, as we know, Route 80 and 154 are the state roads. And I know you have relationships, and you have relationships with DOT, but I guess she sits right next to them. So if you're, if you're interested.
We can have her come back to Deep River, sure.
Should we just set up, shall we move forward in getting a date and work with Tina and, and Trooper Kraus and all of that?
I just talked to Melissa on Thursday or Friday. I can call her again. You want her to come down?
I would love it if she came down.
If she had said she had been here before.
Laid out to what she could do for us. And, and actually, when I think about it, we're just about ready to start April. We could get her started and then get her best thinking as we're moving into the summer months when there's even a lot more traffic. So yes, that'd be great.
What do you think, Dwayne, since she was here before with you and your?
We want her to have her come back and take another look. But like I said, she's been here before. She knows our problems. But if she's willing to come back, and if she's got some new, new ideas and new ways to slow the traffic down.
She said she, she has the equipment. She'll do a counter, and she'll make a recommendation. And the ones I had put in the write-up to the two of you, and these are the ones, Union Street, Bridge Street, Spring Street, Kelsey Hill Road, which we already know, Elm Street, Rattling Valley Road, Cedar Swamp Road, Warsaw Street, 154, and Route 80, understanding those last two are state roads.
Yeah, those are the roads she looked at before. And then after her recommendation, it has to go to the DOT engineers. And that's where we get, like, I just sent him an email about two hours ago about a couple of our residents would like mirrors put up so they can see around blind corners. So I, you know, it seems to go to the DOT and some departments and just dies or something.
You mean for Route 80 and 154, or for all of them?
A lot of those.
All the other ones should be us. All the other town lots are us.
But what she, what she's, from what I understood, we chatted for about half an hour. She will come in, she'll do a session, she'll do an assessment, they'll do the measurements, she'll hold public education, and make it happen, it sounded like. So I, I thought it was a great program, and I'd love to engage her more.
Yeah, it does sound like a great program. So you think it's worth having her come back? Okay. Then I will reach back out to her. But she did say we are on the list for the counters. And we do already have a couple signs on Kelsey Hill Road that are from the state program. The two on Main Street we own, the two on 154 are Deep Rivers. We purchased those with a grant. Okay.
Thank you.
So Carol to call. I think a lot of that education piece would be good, you know, just so people remember to slow down.
So when, when you call, she'll then come down and talk to us and the trooper and chart out what she can do?
You know, I will ask her. I, I, my, all my dealings with her have been, she gives me all the feedback on the counts on Kelsey Hill, those kind of things. She sends me the, the feedback from the machines. And I thought, really, her program was to assist municipalities by the loner programs that they have. You can be on loan to get the counters or the radar things. So I can have her come down. But I wasn't that aware of how much she could do to sit and educate versus walking around with us out on the streets.
Okay, great.
Okay, audience of citizens now. Anything?
In last year's budget, there was $25,000 set aside for the transportation for road improvements. Maybe some of that money could be used up there as well for improvements, separate line up.
I'll have to see what's left of that. Okay.
My other question was, you said there were two pieces of real estate that they're evaluating, evaluating. One of them was the fire department, the solar building. What was the other one?
There was a piece of property we own on Hive Street. It's just a little, not a right-of-way, but it's a little strip that goes along one of the properties into the school. And one of the neighbors is interested in buying that.
Okay, so one of the neighbors is buying one. All right. And then a question for Tim. What is the, what do you think the interest is on the bond for the fire truck? You, you, we buy a new fire truck. What do you think the interest would be?
I have no idea. That would be up to bond and Board of Finance.
What, what is it on the one we just bought? You know, we don't know.
I don't know that. They financed all that.
Isn't that for their extra road?
I mean, there's enough real estate on that basis where you could pay cash for that fire truck.
I don't think they heard you.
I said, there's enough real estate that you have being appraised where you could pay cash for that fire truck. And it would put this, the town at a great financial advantage because I'm sure the interest rates are quite substantial.
They are.
I mean, a pickup truck pays us 90%. I can't imagine a commercial fire department, we get a fire truck, it's not a question, 90% on 1.3 million dollars is substantial. And if we can make some actionable decisions on some real estate around here, we could, we could average a fortune towards that thing and put us in the graph, see?
The last bond issue that we, we did issue back in 1031 of 2023, it was only 500,000 dollars for 15 years. But the rate, the rate was 5.75%.
And that was when?
That was back in October.
I bet you that was 9.5% or something.
Yeah, that was, and if you look back, some of the bond issues, they've been as low as 2%. So that 5.34.
And not for nothing, if you took that money from the real estate and put it in a calendar for a year, you could collect 5% on it before we picked up a loan on that fire truck.
Any other audience of citizens directed to the Board of Selectmen while we're still in session here? Go ahead, Jerry.
Is, when is the town's budget locked in?
Me.
April 30th, I believe, we're going to have the town public hearing. So it'll have to be locked in by then.
And are the Board of Finance meetings open to the public?
Of course. Anything else? All right.
No motion.
We're going to keep it open. We're going to keep it open for you. All right. Thank you, guys. We're going to adjourn the meeting, and we're going to go into, well, not adjourn publicly, but adjourn publicly.
Hear ye, hear ye. I call to order the March 2024 regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda is the approval of the February 27 regular meeting. Does anyone, hopefully, everyone has glanced at it and would like to make a motion to accept it.
So moved.
So moved. I have a second.
Second.
Anyone wish to discuss it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Glenn, thank you. While we're on that subject, let's see, there is a discussion, we'll use this as an opportunity to invite everyone. There is a discussion that certain things will take place at a public meeting. That public meeting will be next month, April 1st at 6 o'clock. At that meeting, we are going to approve the accounting system, and we will also approve what's in the minutes for, how did we phrase it in the minutes? The dog fund accounting fees, incremental fees. And while we said in the minutes that we would have that meeting March 1st, we're only meeting, uh, March, in March, we're only missing it by 18 hours that we do it on April 1st. So if we could all get that close, wouldn't that be nice? And also in that meeting, we talked about, the, the meeting says that selectmen are going to meet with WPCA and chat about potential coverage of capital costs. Has anything like that taken place officially yet, or?
No, I have the letter, and we were going to meet at the last meeting, but I went to a Board of Ed. But I know they're meeting tomorrow morning.
There is a meeting tomorrow. It's a workshop tomorrow morning. So that is correct. I did not think you had met. So good. All right, with that in mind, I, when I put the agenda together, I said, audience of citizens. Citizens, would you like to comment? All right, well, that brings the third item that we'll bring to the front hour. It is the time that we chat about our annual audit, the June 30, 2023, ending 2023. Okay. Our auditor, our principal, principal, do I call you principal, or do you lead auditor, is Mike Vander, I always get, there's so many vowels here, but I'm going to do it. Vander, Vanda, Venter. Okay, excellent. I think I've taken a bye in prior years, but it seems to me I've known you so long that I need to be able to say your name. Welcome, and you will introduce all those who have, who give you help.
Very good.
Mike, since I'm to the minutes, could you please just spell your last name for me?
Sure.
I was on there. Never mind, never mind. I got it, I got it.
It is on the presentation, and I will take it. It's, it's actually, it's Mike Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. Joining me is Lauren Messina. Lauren is a senior manager at the firm, really responsible for the day-to-day execution of our, of our audit procedures. So again, happy to be here to present the results of the town's fiscal year 2023 audit. You would have received multiple reports, the financial statements, single audit report, communications with those charged with governance. I will not be going through those reports in detail. I will go through our presentation. That really provides an overview of the results of the audit. And again, happy to answer any questions as we go along. So if we can turn to slide two, as far as the scope of work, again, we did perform an audit of the town's financial statements, the presentation. Did you guys name extra one? Does everyone have a copy of the presentation?
I do. No, I do. No, it's, no.
Is there a bagel? We can chat around.
I think you're just here. Yes, yours.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So if you could turn to slide two, as far as the scope of work, again, we did perform an audit of the town's financial statements. We performed that audit in accordance with both the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of funding that was received and expended by the town, we did perform a state single audit. The town was just under the threshold for a federal single audit this year, and therefore, one was not required. We do also perform an agreed-upon procedures on the end-of-school-year reports that are filed by the school district with the Connecticut Department of Education. In addition to those test services, we do perform some non-audit services for the town. So we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, the schedule of expenditures, the state financial assistance, and related notes. We also assist in converting your governmental fund financial statements to your government-wide financial statements. In order for the firm to be able to perform those services and remain independent of the town, management is required to oversee and accept responsibility for those services. Again, Anne Marie Ryan is the finance director, and Bob Grissom is the regional school district number four finance director, have ultimately accepted responsibility for those services. In terms of the report on the financial statements, we did issue unmodified clean opinions on your financial statements. Again, an unmodified opinion is expressed when we've concluded that the financial statements have presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, and that is established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. I do like to point out that our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material misstatement, whether due to error or fraud. So again, we do not provide absolute assurance. We do not test every transaction. We do utilize sampling in our audit methodology. The financial statements do include estimates, and therefore, we cannot provide absolute assurance. But again, reasonable assurance is still a high level of assurance. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we do issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. In this report, we don't actually express an opinion on your compliance with laws and regulations, or on the effectiveness of your internal controls. Essentially, during the course of performing the audit on the financial statements, if we become aware of a material non-compliance with laws and regulations, or a material weakness or significant deficiency in your internal controls, we are required under our standards to include it in this letter. So we did not report any material non-compliance of laws and regulations. We also did not report any material weaknesses in the town's internal control over financial reporting. However, consistent with, with prior year, we did report a significant deficiency in the town's internal control over financial reporting. That finding is reported as 2023-001 in the state single audit report. Again, it is a repeat finding. We did realize going into this year, from an audit perspective, that there was transition within the town. And so ultimately, you know, we, we expected that this, this deficiency was going to be repeated. Again, during our audit, we did note that there were certain deficiencies that were indicated. that were indicative of a significant deficiency, really surrounded the adjustments that were required as part of the audit. Again, to reconcile the town's general ledger with the school district's general ledger, to reconcile inter-fund balances and activities between funds, to reconcile tax and sewer assessment receivable balances to supporting reports, and then to ultimately convert the sewer fund, which is reported as an enterprise fund from the modified accrual basis of accounting to the full accrual basis of accounting. So again, no real changes in what we're reporting from prior year. Again, it was our expectation with the transition that we were going to have to assist in some of these areas in order to get the audit done this year. But again, this is something that we've had discussions with Anne Marie and will hopefully be resolved moving forward.
You phrased it in sort of a qualified way, but I think it's worthy of celebration. We've made great strides since the last time you were here in that very area. So I think it is worthy of a celebration.
So again. Yeah, that's going to make a big difference. It really is.
So is this something that could be totally remedied within a six-month timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, I think the expectation is a lot of it's going to be kind of like a first time through, like understanding, you know, what needs to be reconciled, you know, what that process is. So ultimately, I would think that this next cycle, you'll be able to address a lot of these issues. Again, the town is required to complete a corrective action plan that will be required to be submitted to the Office of Policy and Management. Anne Marie, I don't know if you had a chance to work on that yet, but that's something that we should probably do and submit by the end of April. Happy to report that we did report some significant deficiencies and an instance of non-compliance in the prior year that were not repeated. That related to a significant deficiency over capital assets, significant deficiency over the accounting for leases, and then also a non-compliance related to a major state award program, which was a reporting requirement that wasn't met in the prior year. Again, none of those issues were identified this year and we consider them to be resolved. In connection with the state single audit, we issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the state financial assistance level. So in this report, we do actually express an opinion on the town's compliance with your major state programs. For fiscal year 2023, the total state funding was $2,185,000. That wasn't a typo. It wasn't even number this year. The majority of that is considered exempt from our compliance testing. The portion that was not was about $509,000. Your major programs was the Town Road Grant Program and the Minnesota Grants and Aid. Again, we did issue unmodified clean opinions on compliance over those programs and we did not report any internal control deficiencies over grant compliance. Next section goes over your financial highlights. Again, a lot of the financial information is included in the statements. Again, anything of significance or concern, from my perspective, I would include in these overall financial highlights. The original operating budget for the general fund did plan for the use of fund balance in the amount of $689,000 to balance your revenues and expenditures. During the year, additional appropriations of $210,000 were authorized, resulting in a planned use of fund balance of about $899,000. Your actual change in fund balance on a budgetary basis was an increase of $416,000. So that resulted in an overall favorable budgetary variance of about 1.3 million. That surplus was driven by revenues, which were about $715,000 more than budgeted, resulting from favorable property tax collections, building permits, and police private duty reimbursements. And your overall expenditures were about $601,000 less than budgeted. Next slide goes over your financial highlights for your governmental funds. So this includes your general fund on a GAAP basis, as well as all of your special revenue and capital project funds. The town is reporting combined ending fund balances of about $5.3 million. That was a nominal increase of about $6,000 from the prior year. Of the $5.3 million, $3.8 million was in your general fund. That was an increase of about $394,000 from the prior year. $2.9 million of that was considered unassigned and that represents approximately 14.9% for about 1.8 months of your general fund budgetary expenditure appropriations. Again, the recommendation from the GFOA is that all governments, regardless of size, maintain about two months of reserves on hand. Again, you have been building this reserve over the last couple of years and I would consider it to be sufficient along with your capital reserves. The capital non-recurring fund has an ending fund balance of about $928,000. That was a decrease of about $497,000 from the prior year. Again, decrease attributed to budgetary transfers in from the general fund, offset by your current year outlays for authorized projects. Your ARPA fund had a change of fund balance of about $3,000, increase of about $2,900 from the prior year, which really represents the interest that was earned on those funds. Again, the unspent funds are reported as unearned revenues until allowable expenditures are identified and incurred. And that amount totaled about $948,000 as of year-end. And then all of your other funds had an ending fund balance of about $321,000, which was an increase of about $72,000 from the prior year. And again, no fund deficits were identified as part of the audit. Last slide goes over your government-wide financial highlights. So this includes your governmental funds converted to a full accrual basis of accounting. It does capture the town's capital assets, including your infrastructure, as well as all of your related debt and long-term liabilities. The focus on the government-wide financial statements are really on your long-term liabilities. The town is reporting a positive unrestricted net position of about 1.9 million. In terms of your net pension liabilities, you are reporting a net pension liability for the town plan of about $2.1 million. That plan is currently 34% funded, utilizing a discount rate of about 6%. Again, there's been some significant benefit payments that have been made over the last couple of years that have depleted the assets in that plan. Again, typically, a well-funded plan would be anything between 60 and 80%. So again, I'm sure the annual required contributions are going to continue to increase, but that should be an area where, you know, the board would look at to, you know, potentially provide some additional funding to the pension plan. The net pension liability for the fire plan was about $361,000. That plan is about 62% funded, again, utilizing a discount rate of about 6%. The town also does recognize the net pension liability for the participation of some employees from the school district in the Connecticut municipal employee retirement system. That liability totaled approximately $44,000. The plan at the state is approximately 68% funded. The state's utilizing a discount rate of about 7%. And again, so this represents the liability associated with those employees in that plan. The town does also report other post-employment benefits. That reflects retiree healthcare benefits for eligible employees of the Board of Education. Again, state law does allow eligible retirees access to the Board of Education's healthcare plan provided to active employees. The actuarial determine liability for those benefits totaled about $148,000 as of year-end. Last slide goes over our required communications. Again, these communications are required by our auditing standards. We do issue a separate letter that includes these communications. The first item here talks about a responsibility under our auditing standards. Although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, they are the responsibility of management. All of the information included in the financial statements came from the town. It's our responsibility to perform our audit and express our opinion on those statements. In terms of the plan scope and timing of the audit, again, no changes in the overall plan scope of the audit. There were two one-month extensions that were requested from the Office of Policy and Management. In terms of significant audit findings, we do review your accounting policies and practices. One of the items we typically will point out is if there were any new accounting standards that were implemented that may have had a significant impact on your financial statements. Again, no new accounting standards were implemented that had a significant impact on your current year financials. As I mentioned before, the financial statements do include some significant estimates and judgments. Those consist of the estimated useful lives that are assigned to capital assets, the allowance for doubtful accounts on taxes receivables, discount rates that are utilized to determine your net pension and OPEB liabilities, and you also have a landfill closure and post-closure care liability. Again, we did review those estimates. We did deem them to be reasonable and consistent with what other municipalities do utilize in developing their estimates as well. Happy to report there were no significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Again, everything we requested was provided to us. There were no uncorrected misstatements, so any audit adjustments that were identified were proposed and were recorded and reflected in the financial statements. We had no disagreements with management. We did obtain a management representation letter. There were no unusual representations requested by us from management. I always give the board the example, if we were unable to substantiate a transaction and we were relying on the representation from management, that would be something that we would disclose to you. We were not aware of any consultations with any other independent accountants. Again, under our auditing standards, if you did consult with another accounting firm, we would be required to speak with that accounting firm as well regarding any of the issues that may be discussed or identified. So again, not aware of any consultations with any other independent accountants. And then the last item here, we did have some other recommendations, not that we felt rose to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness, but that were recommendations that could be addressed by management. The first item here talks about procurement. Again, with all the federal funds that are being utilized, there's been kind of an increased focus on procurement. Our recommendation is that you establish a standardized form to ultimately document compliance with those policies. So ultimately, the standardized form would be used to document the process that you utilize to follow procurement. That would be attached to the dispersment file. Again, there would be no questions as far as, you know, how the decisions were made related to procurement. We do have a recommendation regarding the evaluation of your current accounting system. I know you intend to implement a new accounting system, so that should certainly address this recommendation. Maintaining funds on a general ledger system. Again, you do have some funds that are not currently being recorded on a general ledger. We do assist in compiling that information as part of the audit process. So again, the recommendation is ultimately to record all funds, activities on the general ledger. And again, that's something that I would recommend doing in connection with your implementation of UNIS.
Is there any change with the funds that's not on the general ledger?
The pension trust funds, so the volunteer pension trust fund, the town pension trust fund. Again, you do get reports, but ultimately that information, you know, should be recorded in your general ledger and reconciled. So again, there's not a lot of activity, but it's something you can do on like a quarterly basis.
The account structure is there. It's just we've generally relied upon them to kind of.
In terms of the town clerk revenue account and activity, again, the town clerk does have her own checkbook and accounting system. Again, our recommendation, just from a segregation of duty perspective, is to have the finance director or someone in the business office review dispersments, bank statements, and canceled checks on a monthly basis. Again, just from an oversight perspective. Accounting for capital assets, again, in the prior year, we did report a significant deficiency. So this year, we have less issues with the overall capital asset reconciliation and accounting. Again, there is still some room for improvement in the tracking and maintaining the capital assets in a subsidiary ledger. Ultimately, again, just recommend you include it as part of your year-end closing procedures. And then the tax office, we didn't note this year that the amount that was transferred to suspense did not ultimately agree with the amount that was approved by the Board of Finance. There were some reconciling issues. So ultimately, a recommendation is for, again, someone just to review the transfer of the tax accounts to suspense before we come out to do the audit. Again, that does get incorporated into your schedule of tax collectors. So again, it's just another level of oversight.
I mean, we shall deal with it. How'd that happen? I get protective. Never mind. All right.
The difference was not significant. It wasn't a significant issue. Again, that's why it doesn't rise to a level of a significant deficiency or material weakness. Just an added control in terms of reviewing that information as part of the year-end closing process. With that concludes all of our communications. Again, happy to answer any questions that any of the board members may have.
Questions? If, basically, I'm going to say the same thing. When people turn with their big book to page 19, everyone's going to say exactly the same thing. And this is a balance sheet. Government funds. You will notice the first fund, general fund, is the one that we've spent all of our time focusing on. There are other funds that stand alone. Let's focus on general funds. Let's go all the way down to the bottom. And you will glance, you'll see there are 3.8, which Mike already commented on, okay? That is our fund balance. Let's take a moment and say some of those funds are restricted, committed. Mike, would you give a definition of the two there, restricted and committed? We can't use either one of them, is what you're saying.
They are, well, the not, so you're referring, so restricted would be the funds are restricted for specific purposes from external parties.
External parties.
Correct. So this would be typically, grant programs are typically what's driving that factor.
So if the state was to have given us money for playgrounds quickly, it would be, while it could be in the general fund, it's restricted. So we do not have the flexibility to use it for other uses.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Other things that would be restricted is if you did bonding and you had unspent bond proceeds. So that's what I actually think in the capital non-recurring fund. You have $613,000.
And that is where we've moved to. All right, good. How about committed? Restricted sounds like there's an obligation to use them. Committed is less.
Less restricted. It's more of an internal commitment to be used for certain purposes. So typically, if you have special revenue funds, town clerk, certain town clerk funds would be considered committed.
Okay, gotcha. And assigned is, the 822 is, you called out that we committed some, a portion of our fund balance to meet obligations of the next year's taxes, correct? And that is what you put in there. And not only do we commit part during our budget approval, during the year, we committed other funds, correct?
Correct.
I think it was only 600 we committed to meet the budget and there's additional funds that are committed here.
So there is a schedule that kind of details out that information in the notes to the financial statements. So in terms of your assigned funds, you did assign about $774,000 to this current year budget.
Yes.
And then you had encumbrances of about $48,000, which again, were commitments against prior year authorizations.
But yet, this is June 30. You did not look at our commitments that we made after June 30, correct?
Correct. This is as of June 30.
So with the help of Anne Marie, I will remind the board, we committed during the year $100,000 of our surplus for roads.
$150,000.
I thought it was 100 for roads and 50 for recreation. Regardless, we've committed 150, all right? In addition to that, we were required to recognize the needs of a special student in the amount of 150,000. So a portion of that 2.9 has been committed, slightly in excess of 3, is what I guess we're talking about. If we were to do a netting of, if we were to go all the way to the back, you do an audit of our budget, which is what we're used to looking at. We added to our surplus, fill in the number, $416,000? Is that the right number? Surplus?
So 416 was the actual revenues cash received over expenditures.
Okay.
Correct.
416, and that, if you look in the back and you called it out, 601 under expenditures and 85, this gets real complicated.
Yeah.
Less revenues collected, what expected. Giving us 416. And we committed 300 of that 416. So while we contributed to the surplus, we have used some of that surplus, which those of us who are working on next year's budget take some of our, may take some of our flexibility to take some of our unused funds to meet that obligation. So that is the. So that is the life we lead, general funds. I wish you now, and Catherine and Tom will get a gold star, in the incubator building fund, they have recommended that we should take out, drop a number in. Is it $37,000 out of that?
That's the small cities loan business program.
And you are suggesting it is not being used at the incubator, although it is, and Mike will correct. I suggest it's in the incubator building fund. We wish to take it out, but Mike will not allow us to take it out unless there's been some approvals.
That particular program has nothing to do with the incubator, but three incubator accounts, so.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, no, I'll go over that.
I thought it was loans, people out there.
It was a small loan business program that started back in 1999, when Dick Smith was our first selectman and.
Yes, I remember the loan program. So is that one of the funds that is not on our general ledger? You're giving me yeses and nos. I'm confused.
The Small Cities Program Fund is a non-major special revenue.
Ah, goes into the back.
It's in the back.
But I still need approval, I need a request from the selectmen to the Board of Finance to move that into the general fund?
Yeah, I would agree, and then I would just, Emery, just check to make sure there's no continuing compliance requirements associated with it.
I would, Ms. Catherine has found an original person back from 1999.
Okay.
Tom found the letterhead and we went ahead and Googled it.
I have the entire file. It goes back to 1999.
And we spoke to the woman.
Any kind of, any deposits that went into that account, everything is here. If anyone wants to look at this.
Yeah.
And, you know, this is, in fact, I think the last deposit that was actually made, I have it here, last deposit that was, it was 11-6-2009. So that was the last time that we received any payments. Since then, the only thing that's been, you know, we've been getting interest on that from 2009 to the present. So it's just been kind of sitting there. You know, this is with, we're merging with, actually, this is between the Greater Hartford Business Development Center, which merged into Headco in 2001. That's where it started. And, you know, money that's in that account now is actually from different businesses that we had tried to help out. So those are payments that came from them.
Right.
There were two actual businesses that defaulted. And, but, you know, again, you know, we can't collect anything because that goes back, you know, so many years, because of statute of limitation, we wouldn't be able to. We've spoken to our, you know, town attorney, she recommended that come back to me to see what we, you know, what she thinks, you know, we should be doing with that. Katie, you know, the same thing, we've looked into this and there's, you know, according to the Headco, everything has been closed out years ago. So they recommended that we could, you know, it's the town's money, we can do whatever we want with it. My recommendation would be that we close that account out and we put it into our general fund. And I was going to make that recommendation tonight to the Board of Finance.
We always appreciate more funds than the general fund, so. Excellent, excellent. I wish to also, for a brief conversation, since we've got Tom celebrating, I'm going to take you to page 35, fund balance. Is this where we're at? And we have bumped into this before. If you go to your local bank, there's generally a sign on the counter there that says that they will guarantee for any individual up to $250,000 of an account. Certainly, we have funds way in excess of 250 at each of these banks. The auditors are required to at least recognize, where is the one I'm looking for?
37.
Custodial, custodial risk, I went into another page, 37. And there is a recognition that if a bank was to have a failure and we had funds there, we would participate in that failure. Now, Mike, you can comment, which you've commented for. Most, no, you haven't. You've actually qualified your answer. I'm simplified. Most towns face the same risk. Some towns have done some things about it.
So one of the things you can do is request additional collateralization on your bank deposits. Again, typically, banks will charge you a fee for it, but again, it does provide you with some additional security in terms of your overall deposits.
Anyhow, yes, and Tom will decide whether it's worthy of that fee, but excellent.
Yep.
And the other I wish to point out, do you push it under, push it, do you put it under investments? Our pension fund, where's the phrase you use? It is, oh, there it is, right there under investments. Who would have thought? As of June 30, 2023, the town's fiduciary investments consist of fixed and variable insurance contracts entered into with M power retirement. And your suggestion here is all of our investments are with one entity? Is that the word, would you tolerate that word? Or what is the concept you're getting at? We're not diversified enough?
No, it's not, it doesn't really have to do with diversification. It's just more or less a concentration disclosures that it is with an insurance company. All of your investments are with one insurance company. There are diversified products that they provide under the insurance company. But again, it's just a required disclosure by the.
It's a required disclosure, but yet, you did not put a smiley face here. You are, it is something we should be concerned about?
I don't think so. I think a lot of municipalities, the pension plans are structured in the same way. There's a lot of oversight of those insurance companies in terms of these products and reporting and everything else.
Okay.
But yeah, so this is just more or less a required disclosure.
Is one of your audit disclosures.
And again, you have multiple different contracts within the insurance company that does provide diversification.
Excellent. All right, does anyone else have any questions? There's lots of numbers here. Rock the sentences.
Did you also audit the W, the modus operandi at this time?
Yes.
Where do we find that in here?
So that is reported. It's reported on, well, it's kind of blended in with your financial statements. So it shows up in various spots, but anything that's business-type activities or WPCA, and then they do have standalone statements, which start on page 24.
24, 25, 26 are all.
Yep, 24, 25, 26.
And they are, you slightly differ in accounting standards for them.
And was there anything of note to call out with their processes or statements?
Nope.
So again, we do assist in converting their financials to a full accrual basis of accounting, so there are some adjustments that are recorded to reflect a net pension liability, to put the debt that's associated with WPCA on their books. Oh, you have a reconciliation.
Page 96. Something we bumped into. Debt for all the WPCA, all the sewer-related issues, while we, the town, pay for it, it's on the WPCA's financial statement. And you will see, is it on the cash flow statement that you have a note at the bottom? The town pays, moves money over there to make that payment.
Thank you. But you're intimately familiar with these numbers. Is there anything we should be looking at in the whole year?
No, no, say aye. I continue to get curious that the town pays all of the debt service, the assets they use to generate revenues. And maybe I should finish my sentence there. That conversation continues. And.
The equipment is on the balance sheet of the town. The town owns the equipment and it's recorded as such.
Say that again?
The town of Deep River owns all facilities and the equipment, and it's recorded as such. We own it, although they have separate statements.
Okay. All right, it's on their statements, which suggests they own it. But to your point, you see beyond, you see further than the financial accounting statements. Yes.
So the primary government is the town, and the WPCA falls under that primary government. So ultimately, any equipment that is utilized by the WPCA will show up on the WPCA's financial statements.
And it's in the consolidated.
And it's in, correct. But by virtue, it's still part of the town.
Would it make sense then, if they have equipment and are using it for the good of the town, that they charge the town for a usage fee on the equipment?
So typically, it would be they would charge the users of the facility itself.
I'm thinking about the street cleaning, the snow removal equipment and that. Does that make sense? That that charge for use of the equipment is then charged to the town when we actually own that?
And treat it as our rental.
You could.
So that's an appropriate way. I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're inferring.
Oh, no, I'm not inferring anything. This is a very blurred line when you try to draw a line between the town and a WPCA. So it's difficult to say, for me, anyway, at this point, knowing what I know. You know, if that, so to Mike's point, that asset is recognized on their balance sheet. So if we want to play the game of trying to separate out the WPCA from us, the town, then I think it does make sense for them to charge us a rental fee.
Thank you. Mike, can you finish up? An interesting story. I always get embarrassed that we have consistently asked the state of Connecticut for a waiver. We're not going to file in a timely fashion. But you have given me great comfort about cities filing. Could you tell a story about cities filing or not filing and we're doing fine is the conclusion of your statement?
There's definitely a capacity issue with the firms that perform this type of audit. I think this year, there were 55 municipalities that filed on time out of 169. So the majority are on some sort of extension. Some of it may relate to issues at the town, but there's definitely capacity issues with the firms doing the audits as well. Ultimately, the state of Connecticut will authorize up to, you know, six months of extensions before they really start to kind of crack down on the auditor in the town. You know, they want updates in terms of, but they understand the issue, that sort of thing. So again, you know, from our perspective, we would always love to accelerate the audit. For the town of Deep River, it's always been kind of a mutual, takes you a little bit longer to close things out, and we have capacity issues, so we ultimately start after, either in December or January, but it makes it very difficult to get the audit filed on time. So again, I don't see that necessarily changing based on our capacity. But again, you should be more concerned about addressing the deficiencies as opposed to the filing or filing.
What is the filing date? What is on time?
It's December 31st.
December 31st.
I mean, you have 169 municipalities in the state of Connecticut, and you can see the size of the financial statements. You know, it's a tough reporting requirement.
Excellent. Additional questions or, thank you for your spending party of your evening with us.
Thank you.
See you guys around. I believe the next item on our agenda would be, Tom, do you wish to talk about?
Sure. Everyone have the report that I posted before. To start off with the general fund accounts, one thing I want to mention, well, mention here is that the general fund, which now has 331,606, we do have a school payment due of $648,000. That check will probably go out this week, so we're making a wire transfer. I'll have to talk to Anne Marie about that to see how much, how much we, how much the wire transfer will be. If you look at the 2022, that capital improvements borrow, we have 751,418. Remember that, that is a holding account that was established for the, when we gave the loan that we got from Line Bank for the capital improvements borrow. That was originally friendly in 425. So right now, as I said, the balance is 751,418. So we have actually dispersed 673,581.48 out of those monies. And if you remember, by law, the interest rate cannot exceed 3%, basically because it is kind of like a holding account from loan proceeds. On the ARC funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, we see we have 627,560.75. The original amount received totaled $1,003,149.08. So we've dispersed, we've committed, actually, I think that right now, the uncommitted amount is $221,000. We still have committed monies of 466,347, which that hasn't been dispersed. So, but we are down to the uncommitted amount of $221,000. I did, we made two wire transfers in the last month from 220, 2024 to 225, 2024. One was for $800,000 when I was away on March 7th. We just made another one of $200,000 on March 19th. So in the month, we've had a total of $1 million in wire transfers. I will say that, and those monies actually went from the Liberty Bank Money Market account to the general fund. And we've, I've had Jane Mather, who's the Assistant Treasurer, she's now able to do wire transfers to help me out if I'm not available, my absence. But it's only limited to the Liberty Bank Money Market account to the general fund. So that's pretty much the only account that she can, she can make wires. Our education equalization grant monies, ECS monies, we had three allocations this fiscal year. One, actually, we received 417,415.50 on October 31st. Received that same amount on January 31st of this year, and we'll receive our final payment on April 30th of 834,823. So it's a quarter, a quarter and a half that are doled out in those three segments. And that totaled $1,669,646 that we received for the ECS monies. Just wanted to go back to on the memorial fund, the community fund. You'll see that we have three accounts. And if you remember back on December 26th, we actually opened two new accounts with Liberty Bank. That money came from Citizens Bank. One was $20,000 in the checking account, $100,000 went into a money market account. We're getting 5% interest. And you could see there, we've, right now, we've gotten $1,030.46 in interest. We left, we left money in the Citizens account, actually, we left $11,284.79 in that account to cover any checks that maybe hadn't cleared. So right now, you'll see the balance is down to $7,592. That amount has not changed for two months. So it's safe to say that all the checks have cleared. So I want to close that account out with Citizens and transfer that money into, I was going to ask Jackie, as the treasurer of the community fund, where she wants that money. Do you want it into the checking account or do you want it into the money market account?
I would say put it in the checking.
Checking?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you agree, Anne Marie?
You've got kind of a healthy balance in there, $20,000.
Okay, then let's.
Yeah, I'd put interest on it, yeah.
Go for interest, thanks.
Go for interest, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, so put that money into the money market?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks. If you look at our bond issue payments that are coming due, we have the sewer construction bond, that clean water fund project. Actually, that's a, uh, principal and interest payment that's due every single month. Uh, 16,914.76 cents. Uh, so that is now due on, on March 31st. And we do issue a check, a monthly check for that. After that payment's made, our balance will be down to 413,842.77 from original of 3,375,000. So we've only got, uh, we've got two years left on, on that bond issue. The second one, uh, that's due, uh, capital purchases, uh, from Dine Bank for 500,000. That was, uh, a loan that we put on October 31st, 2023. Um, it, it calls for semi-annual payments of interest, and that's what's going to be due on 4/15, 2024. Low 13,256.94 cents in, in interest. Uh, to tally it up, our, and, and this is what I'm, I'm going to get together with Anne-Marie. Uh, we're going to get a spreadsheet together. Uh, I know Katie was working on that as well. Uh, what we'll do is, uh, uh, I'd like to give it to the selectmen and to the board of finance. So you see that we, right now, we have six bond issues for, for the town. And the total balances on those bond issues right now would be 5,454,696.35. So that covers our sewer construction bond, with, like I said, the clean water fund project. It covers the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project, the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project Expansion, uh, capital improvements borrow, capital purchases, which was the one that we just did, uh, in October. And then we have an energy upgrade, uh, which, which covered, uh, three town buildings. The elementary school, the public library, the town hall. And so those are the six bond issues that, that we have. Not has anything to do with the schools. So last but not least, uh, Bud, when you brought up about the incubator building accounts. You know, looking at, looking at those three accounts, if you look at the, the, uh, the 500 building account, the 423039865 account, that one, uh, the last transaction in that was 321,2022 for $1. If you look at the last account, the one, the, the bottom one, uh, there's, for the, which has 2,554.74, there's been no, uh, activity on, on this account for who knows how long. So the, the only one that's really active is the, the middle one, uh, which has, um, uh, it goes up 4,457 dollars and, uh, 48, uh, 48 cents a, a month. Uh, and that's because we're collecting, uh, we're collecting rent from, is it Tri-Tech? Tri-Tech?
Yes.
Solutions?
Tri-Mac.
Tri-Mac?
Yes.
Tri-Mac?
Yes.
Oh, Tri-Mac, okay. So that's, you know, that's, uh, an ongoing, an ongoing thing. I think, uh, there was a three, there was a three-year lease, I believe, but that expired. And so now there is actually no lease agreement with Tri-Mac, I believe. But they're paying, you know, they're paying that much, that much a month. So the recommendation, I know that when Katie gave this, you know, put this together when I was away, um, and with the recommendation that we would consolidate, uh, those, those three accounts into one account and get interest as, as much as we can. And I'll be in contact with Liberty Bank, because those are Liberty Bank accounts. So, but the one I recommend that we, that stays open would be the one that's active, and that I close out the other two accounts. So we'll just have, have one account. And, uh, and again, I'll try to get as much interest as I can. Those, those account, uh, those three, they go back to, one was open 8/28 of 2003, 8/28 of 2006, 6/22 of, uh, 2004. Been around for a long time, but I think it's, it's time that we, uh, did something, did something with these accounts and try to maximize.
The only caveat I would make for that, I'm in complete agreement with that, Tom, is, um, the selectmen are still looking over that write-up we did about the, uh, all the incubator properties, et cetera, et cetera. And along with that, um, I think we need to do some careful looking with Anne-Marie as to when the payments come in. And we have several of them who are paying a dollar a year at a certain point. And just to make sure that that system is, is being tracked and audited. And I think the new accounting system will help along with that. But if they are consolidated into one account, as you're recommending, that should make it even easier to see those payments.
Anne-Marie, you think that's feasible?
I do.
Okay.
So are there grants out there at the industrial park going to one account?
We'll have one, yes, one. Well, as I said, the only one that's getting any, you know, it's that, that one that we've received from Tri-Mac, uh, that they pay every month. Uh, other than that is, is dollar?
Well, we're going to be getting more, Tom. There's, there's one contract, um, that is, uh, going to be, uh, 3,600 a year beginning November of this year. So that'll start coming in. Um.
But that's okay.
Then there's another one, again, it's jumping to a higher amount in 2026.
But from a bank logistics perspective, the only ones that are currently paying us electronically, to your point, are Tri-Mac. And so that would be the only one impacted if we did make a change to that account.
Right now.
Everything else is being paid via check, so it's just a matter of making sure we deposit it into the main account here.
And again, as I, as we brought up when the, uh, the auditors were here about the, uh, small cities loan business program, uh, same thing. I mean, that, that has been, again, the only thing we're doing now is receiving interest since 2009, because that was the last transaction that was made. Uh, it was made on one of the two accounts that actually went, uh, uh, went belly up. So actually, the town and those two accounts, we, uh, town had lost some money on that. It was a total of 34,460. Uh, one was for 13,242, 22, and the other one was 21,000.
So, Tom, if we consolidated, uh, it's all going to be consolidated, then you'll move to an interest-bearing account?
Okay, uh, yes.
So, I mean, a significant interest, whatever they are, going these rates, 4.8 or whatever, I don't know, we'll get five again. Um.
Well, you know, 265,000 or whatever it is, uh, that, uh.
And, and do you see this at any point sweeping into the general fund, or how, how does that work? It's gonna be, or it is a fund within the general fund? So it's, it'll stay here, but can these funds then be used for anything? How, how will this?
I have no idea what they were.
Clarify what I'm trying to say. How will we, uh, this money doesn't technically need to sit here anymore because we're not tied to some small cities program or any other sort of a thing. So, um, we'll keep a certain amount in interest, there should be some strategy with it, and then move the rest into general operations, or what are we thinking?
Your questions are all good. I'm, I'm just without thinking. Uh, I'm assuming that there is dollars here. If there needs to be work on, work done out there, this fund would cover those costs and not the general fund. I'm just making this up as I go along.
Maybe that's something after deciding today to think about as moving forward on that.
Yeah, I think we could think, but for now, I just want to get, uh, start the, the motion, and, uh, we can kind of look at that, uh, down the road, I suppose.
Are we paying bank fees on all of these separate accounts?
No, no bank, no, no bank fees. Actually, you know, again, we're, well, we're not getting, and we're not getting interest except for that, that last one.
Well, that way, the question was, are we paying for that account at a bank's on annual fee, maintenance fee, no?
No, no, they're in Liberty Bank, and they don't charge us fees for the town of Deep River.
Paper statement fees.
What?
Paper statement fees.
Oh, paper statement fees, okay.
Do we pay about $12,000 a year in bank fees to somebody?
We budget for 12.
Do we need to?
Primarily citizens.
Yeah, I was going to say, it must be citizens.
Primarily citizens.
Because that's where the majority of our transactions take place.
I thought citizens just did cash.
No.
Does your bank, does your, uh, do we deposit checks at citizens?
Citizens is, is our checking, like our, our checks. We deposit our cash into the second account listed here, Liberty 504.
Oh, Liberty, okay. Oh, Liberty is what I said. Citizens, you just said most of our fees are at citizens, right?
Yes, because most of our transactions are via check.
But we go through Liberty for checks?
No.
So we go through citizens for checks? Ah, okay. Okay. Okay, others can worry.
So I just wanted to bring that to the board of finance to see if, uh, you know, if you agree with that or if you have any issue with, uh, what we plan to do. Again, it's going to clean up some.
I actually think you need authorization from selectmen and board of finance to move money out of one. Oh, that says small cities hangs alone, correct? And by the way, in my defense, look at those great numbers, they all lumped together. I'm hanging on to the lumping of the, the four accounts, that's why I think they're a part of that. But, uh, it hangs alone, right?
Yes.
So you need no authority, say aye, you can just move it?
Yes, that's the one that, uh, had, there's been no, since 2009, no activity. And, you know, that program has been closed with, you know, headcount.
Can't see anybody who's going to object to that, so.
And again, I have the file, if anyone wants to look at, and we, there were several businesses that the town dealt with. There were only, you know, two that went, you know, belly up. It was a good program, uh, when it was around.
Just for fun, how many people paid you back? Since you're giving compliments to them, how many people paid you back?
I, you know, I have to, I have to go back, I know there are only two that.
You, you don't have any answers.
But I, I would have to go back, I could, I could actually go back, because it's every deposit, and, and there's every single deposit here with the company. And I could go back and I could make a list of, you know, what, how many we, we actually dealt with. If you want me to do that, I can.
I, I do not, I don't.
Or if anyone wants to take a look at this file, uh, I'm probably going to give it to you, Anne-Marie.
Bud, do you need a motion, because the selectmen have not formally agreed?
Sure, I'm, uh, more, well, the board of finance should probably acknowledge that we're going to take it out of one fund and put it into another fund. Board of finance should be in charge of all funds, so, yes. Uh, selectmen recommend it, and board of finance can apply on us.
Is that something we're supposed to do now?
If Tom's going to move, we should, we should give him authority to move it into general fund.
All right, so the board of selectmen, you want to make a motion to consolidate those accounts?
Okay, the one, uh, just remember, the small cities loan program is, is, is separate. So that's the one that's going to be closed out and put into the general fund.
I move, make a motion that we, um, terminate the small cities loan program at FSIC Savings, 3004251, um, uh, moving those monies into the general fund. And that we consolidate the three incubator accounts held with Liberty Bank into one account.
But that one account is going to be the active account, the 423.
Which, yes, which will be the, the middle one shown here, 423049232.
The other ones will be closed out and, and put into that account. Thanks.
Okay. So we have the motion, you want a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're finding it, uh, would you like to act upon the recommendation from the selectmen to, uh, move 37 from the small cities grant into the general fund? And to consolidate the other incubator bill of funds?
So moved.
So moved. I got a first, anyone back, got a second? Anyone wish to discuss it, any more detail? Hearing none, all those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is done.
Thanks so much. Yeah, that's it for me.
I hope, I hope we can do better. What, the 2003, Tom, what was the last deposit?
2009.
Doesn't take us long to act. Uh, thank you, everyone, all right. Uh, Carol, it is your turn to share thoughts and recommendations from the selectmen.
Okay, uh, so we readdressed the, um, the ARPA funds. And we're willing to work with board of finance to spend the remaining monies that we, we had proposed during, um, the tourism corridor, the 35,000. We wanted to spend, um, for the planning and zoning downtown Deep River plan. Mr. Bud, are you listening? Put away your phone.
Sorry, the.
I'm sorry.
Jackie was sharing.
I'm referring in the past. I know. I'm referring in the past at the screen.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So 5.8 million, we're going to have to figure out our share of that. So, uh, we had proposed, uh, moving forward with three items for the ARPA. Three of the projects presented. One is public art for 25, um, the planning and zoning downtown master plan for 100, and the regional, uh, the tourism corridor with all those components for 35. And the remaining, we wanted to, we really are, still wanted to support the nonprofits, but there was pushback from this board. So we have talked amongst ourselves, and we would like to offer that to a capital expense of, um, something that we had proposed, which was the transfer station expenditures. So we are willing to work with the board of finance to, uh, move forward on some of the items that we think would help our economic development. And also, um, very aware that with our expenses on our budget, the way it is, that we need, we need to put money back in, so.
How much is left over for the?
Uh, we have 60. We have 60, but again, we talked amongst ourselves, and, you know, we might, we would be willing to kind of, um, change some of our numbers somewhat if you needed, um, a higher figure on your end to cover the transfer station request that we had put in. You know, as Dwayne pointed out, we had arbitrarily set 100,000 for transfer station upgrades, but we really don't have any cost, so we don't really know if we need the 100,000 or if we need 200,000, or if we can do a way, you know, do with 30,000. So there was a thought we'd reconfigure the entrance, maybe put a gate in, um, with the, the gatehouse that everyone would like to see to check the stickers as people are driving in. So those were some of the smaller upgrades that we thought we could make a larger impact with, with just putting the money in those. Because the feedback from the residents, as you remember, at the pay-as-you-throw was that, um, a big complaint was that people don't check stickers, that sort of thing. So we thought we could address that. Uh, that was one thing. And then the other was to, um, recommend, board of selectmen, we wanted to recommend that we include the purchase of the fire truck in next year's budget. And we were putting that on your, um, financial heads there to figure out if next year we could afford it. We would like to see if we can, and, um, figure out how it could pay for, so.
So I just need to clarify. So you are recommending that we move forward with 100,000 for planning and zoning?
Yes.
Uh, public arts of 25,000?
Yeah.
The tourism corridor for?
35.
35,000.
But Jerry, Jerry said he could, you know, they all said they're happy to get what they can. There might be a little wiggle room on some of those projects. Um, I know Jerry was thrilled to get even 25, so, um, and then the remainder, which at, with those numbers, Jackie, stands at 60,000. We would then, um, not push for the nonprofits like we were trying, the nest and pandemonium. Um, again, understanding that we're facing a little bit of a crunch here. So we said, all right, we could put that money towards a capital expenditure, which would be the transfer station. I threw out as the transfer station.
Approximately 60,000 transfer station.
Okay.
Now, we just, uh, say this about that.
Pardon?
On Monday, you are going to take this to a public meeting? April 1st?
No, we did not include ARPA in the legal notice.
Oh, you did not?
Because we, uh, uh, originally, we wanted to, but because last time we presented to you guys, it didn't go through, we didn't, um, we just really need to move forward with the Anne-Marie, the expense for the finance department, and then the two agreements, the interloper agreement for the animal control officer and hazardous waste through the river park.
Excellent. So as we move through the budget process, as we continue to do, we will decide on some number for the transfer station? And that will be the number that you will start with or back into?
I think the board of selectmen is willing to work with that, yeah.
So, again, just, I'm sorry, just to clarify. So you're not making any ARPA recommendations tonight? Because you want to get some dollars for what it would cost to do the transfer station before you come back and make those recommendations? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, is that how we want to? We wanted to present it with those three items that we all were in favor of moving that forward. That got, that got voted on in our last board of selectman meeting, it's in our minutes.
What if it's more than 60,000?
The transfer station? Then.
We'd have to find the money.
I think. I think we'd go back and, we can talk, like, you know, the Board of Selectmen would reconvene, open that up again for discussion with our three projects.
So we should hold off voting on the ARPA money until we know that?
I think we're being asked to vote on the ARPA money.
Okay, all right, that's, that's my question.
I'm assuming that as we move through the budget meeting, we will come to terms with what we think that cost is, with your help, for the transfer station.
For the transfer station.
And that will then be used in the budget, we will not ask Citizens to pay for that, we will ask ARPA to pay for that, and you will readjust your other discussions. Just the way I'm leaving.
Yes, Board of Selectmen, we'd be open to having that discussion. And then, also, the fire, fire truck, we would like to see how we could bomb that, and what the payments would be, and how we can put that in the budget. So as the Board of Selectmen were interested in moving that forward, knowing that when we, as we all walked out there and learned, well, you put the order in, it's two or three years before you get delivery of the truck, so we're trying to look ahead, and we don't wanna be caught in three years to put in the order in or something, because then we won't get the truck for six years down the road.
We will deal with that in the budget, I mean, it's, well, yes, we'll deal with that in the budget workshop, so. Excellent. Okay, do you have anything else you wish to share?
I do have, from the fire, so I was talking to the fire department today, and I do have the new estimate that they would like us to share.
Your new letter?
Oh, there you go, I have a question. It's a two-page, I didn't staple.
Most current quote, huh?
Yes, this is the most current.
It's a true quote, it's a, just like last week.
It's two pages.
Two pages, yes.
I'm sorry, Tom, I missed what you said.
It's not a true estimate or quote or bid, it's just their, their letter of the colony and the costs, and where they, where they feel that it should be for that same truck.
Selectmen have any desire to pay for the current truck that we've already ordered with ARPA funds, therefore use the things you're chatting about now to, well-
How were we planning to pay for that, Bud?
You're going to use the current funds that will, we will use ARPA funds to pay for the truck we just bought.
How are we planning on paying for it right now? We've already expended those funds, I'm not quite tracking with you.
No, they're in our budget. They're in, we borrowed it.
All right, so you, if you used, are you suggesting we use ARPA funds to prepay a borrowing?
For the truck we already bought.
Are you suggesting that we use the ARPA funds to make a prepayment on that?
You're gonna pay, well, how much money you gonna give me for ARPA? Whether it's prepayment or a full pay?
Oh, we only have two twenty left.
Yeah. Maybe. Some of those could be revisited, couldn't they? I'm pushing.
Absolutely, but I, we do really feel strongly that we have to put some money in economic development, I mean-
And it's an excellent point, sorry, I just feel strongly in every direction, that's my slight curiosity.
Yeah. Well, I mean, there are some projects out there that have been, I'm probably using the wrong financial term, but committed, but yet not expenditure, not expended, so we are gonna probably revisit, like Park and Rec got seventy-five thousand.
Correct.
You know, so if they don't lock into spending that, that, we're gonna pull it back, we're not gonna lose it. And we're gonna, Anne Marie and I are gonna be working on a letter to send out to all the groups that got promised money, or not promised, but got allocated, and if they can't enter into, you know, contractual agreement by December, then we're taking it back.
You're accurate, right. Your question is a noble one. I just, I just am uncomfortable with the amount of dollars we have to do. And my, my conversation is, we'll use ARPA, which we have to pay for by what, December, or by mid? We already got a truck on order, we'll pay for it. All right? And the money we borrowed not too long ago, we'll pay for a new truck. Sorry to point you as the, we'll pay for the new truck that you were recommending, with the money we've borrowed here.
Part of the new truck.
Part of the new truck, that's, that's-
Which, which truck are you talking about? I'm asking, you have two trucks.
The tanker, has to be a tanker.
This truck, this truck.
The one that's already- The current one, that's on order.
Current one. What, what are you suggesting to put money towards? Which one, which current one, which two?
The second one, the tanker.
The tanker, the tanker. Which you're already using some ARPA funds on, right?
My conversation, which I'm making up as I go along here, don't hold me to facts, but yes, that would get me out. Get that ARPA fund spent on a fire truck. Again, I have a bias, and I'd like to use ARPA for capital. And I do not mean to be rude, but I'd rather have a fire truck than a picture of an elephant on a wall. My bias.
Everyone should discount that.
We're discount. So noted.
Yes. All right?
Well, we were trying to split the difference, like, we have two twenty, we were throwing some back, but trying to still do other good things for the town with the money.
All right, good. All right, Board of Finance, have any other thoughts on the hints of where the remaining ARPA funds are going, suggested directions?
I just wanna clarify, I've heard about the ARPA funds, but your recommendation that of all of the capital that was requested, we only spend money on a truck.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm following.
Um, 'cause you recommended the ARPA money, and then you said, and we also are recommending buying a truck.
But she said put that in this budget.
That fire truck.
In the budget, it doesn't matter where it is, but why assume that-
I wanted to start that process, since it takes so long to get the truck. I don't wanna put that off. And the Board of Selectmen, we were pretty unanimous about that, but-
Okay, so meaning-
Based on what you guys can figure out of how we can pay for it, or how it gets bonded or financed.
I have to put it in the budget.
So I guess that's what I'm asking, is, so you want to put that in the budget, and that's the only capital request that you're putting in the budget, or it's the only one for right now, to have put back in the budget and keep in the budget?
Well, the town, the transfer station.
And the transfer station, okay.
Which we were gonna try to cover with ARPA. Did I talk about the cyber security audit?
We're confusing here.
Yeah, all right.
We want, we talked about putting a hundred for economic development, thirty-five for the heritage trade, the heritage, and twenty-five for art.
Yeah, that's one sixty.
I believe what Bud is saying is to take, take all that money and put it to the fire truck.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Correct, right?
Yes, you got it.
And including the sixty-one thousand that we were gonna use for the transfer station, correct?
He wants all two twenty to go to the fire truck.
I'm making up as I go along, I truly think something has to be done at that transfer station. Just so Jackie, 'cause Jackie was trying to figure that out.
I just wanna get it right.
And that's why, I just wanted on record that that's the discussion that we have.
I want a secretary as well.
I just, I picked up on what you're saying, I just wanted to make sure that everyone else was all-
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure that the, that the fire truck was going into next year's budget, and that's your recommendation, all three of you, to put it in next year's budget, make sure that stays in there. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing head shakes, so yes.
For right now, yes, correct.
Right, we really wanted to see what the impact was, and how you wanted it.
I mean, we're aware that in two years' time, we're gonna come down in our debt payments on the sewer by two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, so depending on the timing, the one you place in order, it can be, I don't know how you would account for this technically, but the actual payment and beginning of a bond might not hit till a full year later. Don't know how that exactly works. That's what we're asking you to look at and figure out. Can we get it at all in this year's budget?
Not in three, not in three weeks.
Due to the timing, is it something that-
We're going to have to put it into the budget, an annual payment, which is probably gonna be about fifty percent, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which we, okay, goes in the budget. Carol can't sign a letter, it says I am, not a letter, I am buying, the town of Deep River is buying this fire truck, unless we have assurance of where it's going to go. But there's ideas, there's things we might be able to do, but that's what we'll have to do to start the whole building.
Everyone's gotta play that tower role.
Just like we did with the current fire trucks, it's sitting in an account waiting for it to be paid for.
But I think one of the reasons for talking about using some ARPA funds, that you were gonna use them for the fire truck, using it for one that we're already buying, is that it has to be paid for, so if the truck can't be here by December of twenty-six, we can't use ARPA funds for it.
Correct. That's what you gotta do, take the big-
So you have to pay for something that will be here before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, even if you sign the agreement, correct, Anne Marie?
Twenty-six.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Truly don't pay attention, that may be behind the curtain, don't pay attention, the ARPA funds behind the curtain.
All right, um, we'll talk about that. All right. Let's look at financials, monthly financials, and you, Anne Marie has handed you out a new set from what she had sent to you. As we were looking at this, there's a few items, excuse me, that we did not reflect in the prior numbers. This is the, what, the ninth month, so we've spent, if we were to spend everything on a straight-line basis, we will have spent seventy-five, and have about twenty-five percent of our, of a line item left. And you will note that that is front of Selectman salaries right in the twenty-five, all right? You will also note accounting consultants, well, we've spent forty-seven, eight, there will be one more bill coming in.
There'll be one more bill coming in for Kelly, and it sounds like-
Oh, that's right, we still have, okay, we still have library.
Mm-hmm, Angus and Matt are discussing that transition.
Excellent, excellent, okay. So we should expect the accounting to be about fifty, a little over fifty in the fifty, right?
Yes.
Lot of money. Cool, all right. But going to the bottom of the line, we've got, ironically, about twenty-five percent of our Selectman budgets there. Let's chat about elections. There was an election today, and the rule of thumb is an election cost us about, a little over two thousand, or do we still cling to two thousand? Everybody's thought two thousand, but close. And they are in the next room that we borrowed for a moment, they are doing preregistration. Pre, pre, preregistration, is that the right word?
Early voting.
Early voting, okay. And I suspect we may not, are you comfortable saying we're not going over in the fifty percent of the fourteen-five we have left over? Do you think we'll overspend that?
Um, I'll-
I tip eight, I think we'll be okay.
I, I think we'll be okay for this.
Okay, I think it's gonna be close, but I don't think we'll spend all the time. Town hall operations, it seems to be fine, we can stop at any place, anywhere, and when Anne Marie gets free time, we're going to do something about that telephone. Every, every department in the town has its own telephone and internet service, we should be able to find either logic or savings there, so. Town clerk seems to do fine, Board of Finance, our numbers are a bit high because, two reasons. We initially pay the, the auditing auditor fee, and then we get it reimbursed from the school and WPCA, which is not in here?
We generally, they bill us in three installments, we generally pay the first one, and then in the second and third, we will request the double.
So are these proper, do you feel this number is properly allocated, is this the town's, or to be determined?
Uh, I think it's to be determined, there might be a little-
I mean, there's not a whole lot of savings. It is the printing expenses, we incur the cost in local newspapers before the town meeting, so that number will, a substantial amount will be used. Assessor is doing fine, you gotta wonder, audits, but anyhow, such is law. The auditor seems to be doing fine. Tax collector is on serve. Special services, all right, we have not, anyone to take over other than me. The dog fund salary is over. Essex Transfer, the two dog funds are over. That's because, Anne Marie, take it, say the same thing you said last month.
There are two reasons. The first is our new agreement with Essex and Chester, that we have a full-time animal control officer, and the cost of that is a little bit higher than we initially budgeted for. The other piece is related to the dogs-
Oh, yes.
That were seized earlier this year, and some of the vet bills were seized.
So what are we estimating the over, we're going to go over our dollar? We use our contingency, right?
Yes, we've used a bit of contingency, we've used a bit there, but I think what are, the dog piece itself is something in the, what, we get to like seventy-five hundred for that bills?
I think we're about seventy-five hundred for vet bills, all the dogs. But all the dogs have been adopted out. The pound is empty.
That's, that's uncompensating, good. So the forty-one-five, we have unspent, do you anticipate us going over the total bottom line? Or do you think we're okay? Seems with that magnitude, we should be okay.
I think so.
Excellent. Building inspector is over budget, and this is somewhat of a tradition, we will spend some time during our next workshop talking about that, but he goes out and inspects, what else choice does he have, as people build things, and we will talk about, he generates a, he calls himself a revenue generator, and we will look at some of the revenue that he has generated, we will deal with that in our next budget workshop. Employee, let's talk about employee benefits. We are billed on a monthly basis, is that the proper time for health insurance and life insurance, right? So do not get too enthusiastic about the twenty-seven, twenty-five, I think we will use, use most of that. Pension plan, we've got a hundred and eighty-eight to be determined, and that should be deposited with our pension fund fairly soon, okay? Salary is, we had several people that we did not accurately anticipate, so you'll see that went over, and FICA, I assume we're thirty percent left, we're looking for forty-five, that's about right. Unemployment compensation, do you have any hint of where that number is going? Is it going lower or higher? Certainly not going lower.
I have heard nothing.
Heard nothing, okay. Mystery. So we should not look at thirty-eight percent in two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one five, most, certainly the pension plan will take a hundred, a hundred and eighty-eight of it, so, and the others will probably be used as well, if we are not going to break even. We're going to go over the back line item with all of our retirements. Police protection, I wish to draw to your attention on this sheet we're looking at, look at the unused part-time officers, even the unused to date full-time officer. Remember, we're seventy-five percent into the year. I would like to have a conversation at the next budget workshop, whether we should reduce that number. So I will just leave that hang there. Vehicle, vehicle maintenance remains but under, we've overspent there. Anne Marie, remind me, when do you plan to take out the funded police line from this budget? Next budget, you gonna leave it alone here?
Um-
We're just gonna take it out?
I could just take it out, I could, whatever you guys want me to do.
It, it is always confusing, it was always confusing. We've got substantial money, oh, we still have the, we haven't paid for the resident state trooper, which is why there's so much money there. Fire department, from our conversation with the fire department last week, while there is potential that they will need to continue to over, well, overspend on vehicle maintenance, I left that conversation that it is still uncertain, so I'm suggesting that we need to not make an adjustment on vehicle maintenance for the fire department at this moment. To be determined as we move through the year. Highway department, you only have that kind of thing, or, here is where there's a enhancement to numbers. We moved a hundred and fifty of our assumed surplus back in, I don't know, July, August, September, into the general fund maintenance. We, oh, you have changed it to three fifty, so it is here, perfect, all right? We still have substantial amounts of dollars left in there. Assume as the spring goes on, the roads will be addressed. Excellent.
Is that already planned?
The roads?
Yeah. Or is going out for some paving?
Okay.
And still have contingency left in store, I'm sure. Waste removal, we still have substantial amounts of dollars left there. We still have substantial amount of dollars on the salary as well. We planned for two, there's only one out there, why is there so much money left in salaries? Only one person is working?
Well, we had somebody retire, and they haven't replaced him yet. They're gonna hire somebody. They're gonna hire somebody.
So when I already see this, the weekends, you only have two out there on the weekend?
Typically, I think.
Okay. And mere fees you have shared with me, while they're increasing substantially, that does not take place, you're assuming it takes much? It's in the new budget, so they begin July 1st. We've got substantial amounts of dollars left in tipping fees.
Do they put the waste, whoever's working at the transfer station, do those people under highway?
No.
Eddie, Eddie retired from the highway department, not the waste.
Oh.
We have a part-time, we have a part-time guy there working on Saturday, Sunday. That's why there's so much money there.
Right, we have an open position.
Right.
And you have an open position up here, too?
Yep, and up at the highway, sorry, yep.
So we have three positions and only two slots. Correct. So there's one full-time position still open.
There's one open, right, transfer station.
Full-time, yeah.
Full-time.
Correct.
And at the highway department, too, one full-time position open.
We have money there, okay. So we have 190.5 left of waste removal. Seems to me we're going to not go over that line, we could have surplus there, unless anyone did agree, so, all right. Let's go down to parks and rec. You do not know the current status of whether you will be hiring a, a new salary person in this budget year?
We made, we made the offer.
Oh, you, I know you made an offer, but not accepted yet, so...
Not accepted yet.
Okay.
I did ask for the personnel handbook, so it seems to be positively going forward.
Can you share, I get what you're, the maintenance on the all facilities, we budgeted 30, we have spent 38, almost 39 to date, I assume when you go into the spring, you will be spending dollars there. In the new budget, it's 50, I cut it to 40, but what is your thoughts on maintenance costs? Was there a big cost in this number that is not going to be repeated every year?
I can kind of speak for Park and Rec, although I'm not in that department anymore.
Well, you watch, you know everything, you were like the god of Deep River.
We do have a pond maintenance program going on, and so that is, you know, some chunks of money, when they, they've just mowed down all the fragmites now, they've been treating it, it's a five-year plan. So I think that'll be our last big hit.
You don't have any down at the debit field, you don't have maintenance down there? Big numbers down there?
We do, but we haven't had any big maintenance this year. I thought you asked why it was hit this year.
Well, I do, and I'm curious whether the 38, which is 8,000, $9,000 above what we're budgeting, is 30 a good number? Do we have to increase that in the next year's budget?
There's that extra line for park, like on the next page or something?
Far out for the...
Park upgrades.
Yes, yes.
I think that pond maintenance contract, when Angus and I spoke about it years ago, we were planning to always kind of tuck it in there.
Okay, as a capital item, so you don't do it very often? That's all.
Well, it's, again, it's a scheduled program to get rid of the fragmites, and they're doing a great job, you know, they, the DEP permit alone every year is $250, and then they come out seasonally, like four times a year to work out.
And that is fine, just my, my resistance, it seems maybe it's going to be done every year, it's an expense, not a capital item, so, this is my curiosity.
Gotcha.
Okay. Park and Rec, subdivisions, debt payments, elementary schools, you have increased. We had originally approved a elementary school budget of, Anne Marie, help me, 5.8 million, something like that, and remember, we were asked, we were asked, that's an interesting word, we were required to increase this number by 130, 150?
152.
152, because we had a family moved in, had special needs, so that is the correct number that we would use. And regional school, regional school pulls their dollars down on a straight-line basis. Let's tell a story, which I'm not sure I have the proper. Regional school finished their audit June 30. They had a surplus of $352,000, for some reason, number I want to do, which in past practices, they would give back to towns. Now, instead of giving it back in the form of cash, they reduce their billing to us, which they should be doing now, they haven't started doing for this year yet?
They will not be doing this year.
For this year?
Correct.
Which is what, 153? Okay.
They're going to put that 347,000 into their capital now.
So they're gonna put it into capital funds. We will not get dollars back. Do we push it one more time? Do they reduce their capital in following your budget?
That is what the state statute says, yes.
Okay. So they will not be reduced, they will not use their surplus to reduce the current budget we are operating on, they will not be using surplus to reduce what they're currently billing us, which is the dollar amount you have here. It's going, they put it into their surplus. So we will see no relief there, which I hope we would, all right? And capital, let's look at capital first. General fund capital, revow, we will, when we deal with the budget, Anne Marie and I haven't added this number. Remember, we have been putting money aside for five, six, some, five years, probably five years. So we should have the revow, which we do not currently have in our budget, we should have that already paid for. LoSiP used to be a program, the state sets aside money every year for every town, each town then had to file an application for it, they could allow it to accumulate. They have changed their way of doing that, now every town is given that as a grant every year. We have, prior administration, we decided we would use that for roads. You do not have to use it for roads, but that is what is identified here, or that's the expectation, you'll use it. Library, library kitchen had, they still have not done anything with the kitchen, is the way I'm assuming, and they still have not done anything with their windows.
Can I just interject on the LoSiP? Could we not use that to do the work at the Hallow Works building?
I do not know, I'm going to defer to those who understand these things better. I guess you could.
Just a thought, I, I don't know.
I've talked about the sidewalks or roads, or specific projects.
The list is very extensive, very. I can share that guidance, they just released an updated guidance pack, and I think there's probably like six pages of example projects you could use it for.
All right. Thank you.
All right, let's look at the bottom line of the number, and let's pretend we really know what we're doing. We budgeted 14.5, 14.6. We have 5.8 left. It should give us, if we, we wish to, it should give us some comfort that we will have under expenditures, but I should not, I don't want to count on it. And if you glance at the next page, which is revenue, we seem to be doing very well in revenue, certainly in the tax collection area, we seem to be doing fine, but, I seem like over a but in there. If you look at bottom line, we have, we budgeted revenues of 19.3, 19.4, got a million two to go. We should go to make that, we got elementary number, we got school numbers coming in soon, right, Tony? That should get us half of that. And if you remember, there's some seasonality on building permits and that type of thing, so I guess if you would like, you should take comfort that our revenues are coming in as strong as we budget, and I think our expenditures seem to be leaning to not being as big as we thought they were. But that's as good as I can do for you until we get there. If I have any questions concerned about budgets, we will continue this conversation with more intensity next Tuesday, at our next budget workshop meeting. Anybody have any new business they would like to bring up? Old business, thoughts, random thoughts? All live in a yellow submarine, remember, everyone, so. Apps and any new thoughts? Can I have a recommendation we adjourn? I got an adjourn, I got a second adjournment, second. All those in favor? Say ah. Ah, all those pose. Thank you, everyone. See you next Tuesday.